Good evening, everyone. Hope everybody's fine tonight. Regular meeting of the Salem City Council is being held in person tonight, Thursday, March 13th, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. for the purpose of transacting any and all business. Notice of this meeting was posted on March 11th, 2025, at 1:30 p.m. This meeting is being recorded and is live on SATV and Zoom unless technological technological issues interrupt the transmission. Counselor is absent. I see none. Counselor Watson felt moved to dispense with the reading of the record of the previous meeting. All in favor? Two. Requesting that everyone please stand to recite the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Cohen.
Flag of the United States of America to the Republic of the States, the nation and God.
Thank you. Salem City Council honors that this land is honors that this is Lily and his nomkeg our fishing place where generations of nomkeg people from the Pawtucket Band of the Massachusetts Tribe lived and passed through for centuries. We acknowledge that this is unceded indigenous land and also acknowledge Massachusetts Tribe who continue to honor and hold this land to the present. Salem City Council is committed to having ongoing meaningful dialogue with the indigenous peoples who have presence in Salem in order to dismantle the legacies of oppression and inequities that persist today. Public testimony. Public testimony is not to exceed 15 minutes. It is not a public hearing or question or answer period. And sign a mastercard 30 minutes prior to the meeting. Tonight, we have five speakers, so we will be allowing three minutes per speaker to keep us within a 15-minute range. So with that, Jeff Bellin. Just right to the microphone and speak directly into the mic so the folks at home can hear you.
Sure. Hi, everyone at home. So I'm speaking out of the invitation of Counselor Davis about the issue of leaf blowers. And Counselor, hi, everyone. So I come from kind of three angles, and two are probably, you know, probably not new. One is the noise that they create, particularly very early in the morning, very disturbing, and it can be really, really loud. Secondly, is that if they are gas-powered, that's another environmental issue, right? So that's of concern to me. But the third one, having been chair of the bike committee, I'm very aware of, you know, bicycling around here, the infrastructure and whatnot. And unlike with good old fashioned, when I was a child, you know, using a rake and then you bag it and whatnot, you know, this is kind of, it's faster, but it's kind of sloppy way of doing things. You're just blowing. And I see people blowing, just blowing leaves out into the street and creating someone else's problems, kind of like, you know, shoveling your snow or something like that. But one that bothers me a lot, though, is, I forgot, you're giving me the street, you know, Derby Street where you reach the power plant, is the bike path. And I see people in the fall blowing the leaves onto the bike path. And so you just get this huge pile of leaves on the bike path, and I have to go around it. And it's just, again, pick up the leaves like you would, you know, bag them, but don't, and certainly don't put them right in the middle of the bike path, because it's obviously a hazard and it's annoying. Sometimes I have to actually go out, you know, outside of the bike path into the street to get around it. So that's just, you know, some things that are, it's just probably, to me, it's not the best solution. It may be for some, because it's easy, it's go vroom, and it's, you know, not your problem anymore, and it may take longer to rake. But I don't think it's a good solution for all those reasons. So I will surrender my time so somebody can have five minutes. Thank you.
Next would be Grant Hannah.
Hi, I'm here to speak about the leaf blower ban as well. I don't really have anything to add. I think that was very well put. They're very noisy, and they do cause a lot of air pollution, so I'm for it.
Thank you. Phil Laffey.
Hello, good evening. Appreciate you indulging me for a minute or two. First, I have a couple of things real quick. First, I don't have a particular opinion in favor or against the proposed ordinance to ban gas-powered leaf blowers. That said, I find it, at the very least, laughable, if not absurdly hypocritical, for the city to impose a restriction on gas-powered leaf blowers when the city is exempting itself from said ordinance. Do the crafters of this ordinance think the city has magic gas-powered leaf blowers that don't pollute air or create the same amount of noise as other gas-powered leaf blowers? The ordinance states the school department, other city departments, and the contractors are exempt from this policy. The backup documentation details the harmful nature of these tools, so why allow their use near schools and parks where there's concentration of children and other people? I don't understand, because of the harm these cause, why the city wouldn't want to be a role model and adopt the same policy it is contemplating to impose it on its citizens. If the city is indeed going to pass such an ordinance, my recommendation is not only should the city adhere to the policies of this ordinance, but effective immediately cease the operation of these tools on all city properties year-round. Second, regarding the B1 zoning change, I oppose for the reasons I outlined in the email I sent to the unrecused counselors. I truly believe the city is doing everything in its power to develop and monetize every square inch of the city while destroying all zoning ordinance that preserve any semblance of a residential suburb. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Paige Curtin.
Hi, Paige Curtin, 50 St. Peter Street. I'm here tonight just to ask the council for urgency around the agenda item concerning the Lifebridge Shelter expansion. It's just a fact that we need not only more shelter space in Salem, but also the long-term housing outlined in that plan. To that end, I'm also really interested to hear more tonight about the proposed Community Benefits Agreement Ordinance and its potential as a tool for securing more affordable housing long-term. I'm definitely in agreement with the intent behind it, so I'm looking forward to future conversations.
Thank you. Steve Kapatis.
Thanks, Jeff. Good evening, Steve Kapatis. Want to talk about two topics. First, tonight appears that there'll be a vote on increasing the mayor's salary. There is a difference between salary and compensation, and I agree that we need to review what that compensation is on a frequent basis. We need to make sure our mayor is compensated correctly. We want it to be competitive, and we want the best person as mayor. However, I think you have a fiduciary responsibility to the members to look at compensation, the members of our community. You're saying something was thrown together last minute and compared salaries of mayors. There's a lot more than salary, right? There's health benefits, there's dental benefits, there's other fringe benefits, there's expense accounts, there's, there's a vehicle, there's a parking spot, there's snow removal that's done. All of that adds up. When you add that up, the compensation is north of $225,000. How does that compare to other mayors of cities our size? Nobody can say, based on what's been forward, that he's overpaid or underpaid. And what I'm proposing, very may well say that he needs more than 3% or 3.5%. So I think it's your responsibility to look at the total compensation, not salary, before you make that decision. The next thing I want to talk about is our new city website that was just forced to be turned on before it was properly tested, vetted. Even tonight, if you wanted to speak in front of city council and you signed up to speak and you hit submit, there's no verification that your submittal was accepted. It puts you to another page that says error 404. We're missing meeting minutes. If you want to prepare yourself for a meeting, you get caught up on meeting minutes, they're not there. You get an error 404 message. There's what I call ghost appointments on the calendar, saying, okay, we're going to have a meeting tonight, or two days from now, and there's no meeting. It's like a placeholder that's there, so if you're planning to go, how do you know? There's so many things wrong with this website and the way it was launched. It is really bad. It's supposed to be more transparent. Right now, it's less transparent. People can't prepare for meetings, they can't attend meetings if they don't know when they're happening, and it needs to be corrected quickly. Any other aspect is when it comes to the open meeting law, we need to provide 48 hours notice, as you all know. Before, when it was on the court board, I could go down, look at the saying, and see the date and time. The old website, whenever it was updated or changes, it'd be a submittal for date and time. There's no date and timestamp on this meeting tonight. So what if someone now challenges the city and says, hey, you didn't post that in enough time? How do you verify or validate that the meeting was posted appropriately?
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
That ends public testimony. Hearings none. Appointments and reappointments.
We've held from the last meeting the mayor's reappointments of the following with their terms to expire. Brooks Nagel, Kate Zurov, and Rebecca English.
Counselor Varela.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I move for confirmation by roll call vote.
Counselor Varela moves for confirmation by roll call vote. Under discussion.
Thank you, President Prozinski. Just wanted to thank these reappointments for their continued service to our city.
Any other further discussion? When Counselor Varela's motion, the three individuals be confirmed by roll call vote? Madam Clark, please call the roll.
Counselor Watson felt?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Stark?
Yes.
Counselor Mercillo?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Jurslo?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
And Counselor Prozinski?
Yes. On the matter of the appointments of Brooke Nagel, Ken Zurov, and Rebecca English, Mad at carries 11 to 0. Pass. Further appointments and reappointments?
The mayor's appointments of the following with their terms to expire. Maria Feldmanavo and Francis Murphy Jr.
Counselor Varela.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I move that's be held under the rules.
Counselor Varela, was this be held under the rules? Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor? Further appointments and reappointments?
We have the mayor's appointment of Charles Hildebrand in 46 English Street to the Salem Recycling Committee. This is for informational purposes only.
Counselor Varela.
Thank you, President Prozinski. Move that's be received and filed.
Counselor Varela moves it to be received and filed. Discussion? Any further discussion? Counselor Varela?
Do the vote, and then I'll do it after.
There's no, it's received and filed.
Yeah, I know.
All those who, all those in favor, receiving and file? All opposed? Counselor Varela?
Thank you. I know this is a little uncouth, but I'd like to suspend the rules to allow Mr. Hildebrand to speak if he shall choose.
Hildebrand?
Thank you, counselor. And also thank you to Mayor Pangala for appointing me to the committee. I've worked in the recycling industry for the last 17 years and inordinately fascinated by it. It's probably a defect here, but Salem has a very, very strong recycling committee. It's always been a kind of a, you know, well-accepted in the city, and I'm just looking forward to being able to bring my background, my expertise, and my interests to help, you know, make it even better in the future. So thank you. Thank you.
Communications from the mayor.
We have an order for an appropriation totaling $231,370.11 to be transferred to various department accounts for the fiscal year 2025 pay increases pursuant to the contract settlements reached with the local 1818 Ask Me effect of July 1st, 2024.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I move for suspension of the rules.
Counselor Merkel moves for suspension of the rules. Any objections? Seeing none, Counselor Merkel.
Thank you. I move for adoption.
Counselor Merkel moves for adoption. Under discussion.
These are contractual obligations.
Any further discussion? Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I just want to congratulate all the Ask Me workers in the room, and and I do want to say that it was a really good process, and, you know, the, the union and the city negotiated a favorable contract, and I think on behalf of my colleagues, hopefully, we appreciate all the good work you do and really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, on Counselor Merkel's move for adoption, we appropriate $231,307.11 to be transferred from the 2025 count to pay the increases pursuant to the contract settlement. Settlement, all those in favor? Opposed, Mad at carries. Congratulations. Further communications from the mayor?
We have an order for an appropriation of $42,705.78 from retained earnings, water and sewer fund to accounts listed for the fiscal year 2025 costs associated with the contract effective July 1st, 2024 with Ask Me Local 1818.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I move for suspension of the rules.
Counselor Merkel moves for suspension of the rules. Seeing no objections, Counselor Merkel.
Thank you. I move for adoption.
Counselor Merkel moves for adoption. Under discussion.
These are also contractual obligations, and I echo Counselor Cohen in saying thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, on Counselor Merkel's motion that we move for adoption on the appropriation of $42,705.78 from the retained earnings of water and sewer fund to the accounts listed for the fiscal year 2025 costs associated with the contract effective July 1st, 2024 with the Ask Me Local 1818. All those in favor? All those opposed? Mad at carries. Further communications?
We've been ordered for an appropriation, the amount of $25,000 from free cash to the Capital Improvement Fund for the costs associated with conducting wastewater civilians for a highly pathogenic avian influenza.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I move for suspension of the rules.
Counselor Merkel moves for suspension of the rules. Seeing no objections, Counselor Merkel.
Thank you. I move for adoption.
Counselor Merkel moves for adoption. Under discussion.
Thank you. This request came from our health agent, and it would cover one year of surveillance and cost for analyzing samples. The biobot analytics currently tests our wastewater for COVID, which is covered by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. The avian flu testing would be added at the city's expense. Of note, normally this would come from free cash, but that would time out at the end of the fiscal year, so free cash would be going into the Capital Improvement Fund for this expense, so the funds would be available throughout the year. I understand Dave Greenbaum, our health agent, and the mayor wanting to be as proactive as possible, you know, when it comes to our public health, but I also respect if counselors would like more information on this, so I welcome hearing from the council as well.
Further discussion? Counselor Stark.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I would like to request that this, or make a motion that this matter be moved to committee for further discussion.
Counselor Stark moves that this be moved for committee for further discussion, seconded by Counselor Varela.
Oh, I'm sorry, Committee of Administration and Finance. My apologies on that. Need a, you're on that? I don't think so. Thank you, and there was a second, right? Okay. Yeah, so just, I would love further explanation other than they offer this as a testing. I am all for public health, obviously, and monitoring situations, especially where we might not have resources from the federal government in that regard in the future, but I just, I don't know, I feel like this needs a little further conversation and needs analysis or just information would be appreciated.
Counselor Varela.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I wholeheartedly agree that this should be sent to committee. I do have a lot of questions. Someone, I'm, as, I am someone that has 150 chickens commercially, I'm having it kind of a hard time why this is something that we, I just have a lot of questions. So I'm looking forward to seeing this in committee.
Oh, Counselor Watson felt?
Thank you, President Prozinski. Just a couple of those questions in advance for Counselor Merkel's reference as she prepares for committee meeting, so if it passes, would be, I'd like to have a better understanding of who's doing this regionally, if any other cities or towns have run this test or are investing in this kind of study. Also, if there are any numbers or data pertaining to the effect of, of the bird flu on local privately-held, you know, chicken, and I know we've got a couple farms in the greater area. I'd just love to know what the impact of the bird flu has been to date, if there is any data on that as well. Thank you, I'm looking forward to the conversation.
Any further discussion? Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Prozinski. Yes, happy to answer questions in committee, and I welcome any of the counselors emailing me questions too, so we can be as prepared as possible for a future meeting.
And the public? The public. On Counselor?
Sorry, and of course, the public, always. Please reach out to us anytime.
On Counselor Stark's motion, seconded by Counselor Varela, that this be referred to the Committee of Administrative and Finance, all those in favor? Opposed, Mad at carries. Further communications from the mayor?
We have an order that per Master and Law, Chapter 44, Section 64, to pay for prior fiscal year invoice with current fiscal year appropriations with the two-third vote. We have an invoice for $502.35 from the Engineering Department for National Grid.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I move for suspension of the rules.
Counselor Merkel moves for suspension of the rules. Seeing no objection, Counselor Merkel.
Thank you. I move for adoption by roll call vote.
Counselor Merkel moves for adoption by roll call vote. Under discussion.
Thank you. Due to an oversight by National Grid, these invoices were sent to the wrong department, and also with an incorrect amount of over $26,000. So after a successful dispute resolution, these are now the correct charges from September 2023 to June of 2024, and they do need to be paid. And I appreciate the due diligence done by the Engineering Department.
Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I cannot believe that National Grid has ever made a mistake on a bill.
Any further discussion? On Counselor Merkel's motion to move to pay the $502.35 from the fiscal year 2024 invoice into the 2025 budget, this will be a roll call vote. Madam Clark, please call the roll.
Counselor Watson felt?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Stark?
Yes.
Counselor Mercillo?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Jurslo?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
And Counselor Prozinski?
Yes. On the matter that the $502.35 be paid from the, that was supposed to be in the 2024 invoice, but were paid prior to this year's budget, all those in, of the matter, it was voted 11 to nothing, Mad at carries. Further communications from the mayor?
We have an order per Master and Law, Chapter 44, Section 64, to pay for prior fiscal year invoice with current fiscal year appropriations with the two-third vote, an amount of $202.50 for the Police Department for Otis Elevator.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I move for suspension of the rules.
Counselor Merkel moves for suspension of the rules. Seeing no objection, Counselor Merkel.
Thank you. I move for adoption by roll call vote.
Counselor Merkel moves for adoption by roll call vote. Under discussion.
Thank you. The Salem Police Department received the invoice from Otis, excuse me, last month for maintenance services between April and June of last year, so this needs to be paid, and the Police Department is working with Otis to rectify their billing issues.
Need further discussion? On Counselor Merkel's motion, that this be, $202.50 be paid for from last year's invoice to the 2025 invoice, Madam, please call the roll.
Counselor Watson felt?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Stark?
Yes.
Counselor Mercillo?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Jurslo?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
And Counselor Prozinski?
Yes. On the matter of paying Otis Elevator $202.50 from last year's budget to this year's budget, Mad at carries 11 to nothing. Further communications from the mayor?
We have an order for nine, to accept a $19,440 donation for Mr. Bismishow, so it's the purchase of a Throwbot micro robot platform for the Salem Police Department.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I move for adoption.
Counselor Merkel moves for adoption. Under discussion.
Thank you, and I want to give a big thank you to Mr. Mouchard of the Salem Witch Museum for his very generous donation and for the many donations he's made in the past. This is, there was more info on this, the equipment involved in this in the backup documentation from Chief Miller, on what the equipment is used for, and it's, it includes obtaining audio and video during hostage situations, investigating suspicious packages, and other interesting uses. So thank you again to Mr. Mouchard.
We've had a discussion. Counselor Watson felt?
Thank you, just for the public's reference. For those that don't know, Mr. Mouchod, he, as Counselor Merkel just referenced, often gives really generous donations specifically for public health and emergency service response. So I just appreciate not only his generosity, but I want to just call out for his many years of engagement with the city and his, his ongoing support specifically to keep all of us safe, you know, as part of it. And, and you know, he's got a business, it's, it's a high-profile business. Definitely, public safety matters to him and to his business, but it's, it's wonderful that we all get to reap the benefit of his generosity in this way. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mercillo.
Thank you, President. I did ask the chief for a little bit more information on this particular device, just because I think the public could use more information when it comes to these kinds of electronic devices that are used. So he did, he did reply back to me that it's basically a two-wheel car that's the size of a shoebox, and it's built to withstand abuse, obviously, and the controller for it contains a video screen so that whoever's controlling it can see where it's going. He also said that the main use of the device would be to allow officers to see into rooms and around corners without exposing officers to whatever danger might await them. I had, he also said that the use of the device in no way circumvents the Fourth Amendment protections. It can't be used anywhere the officers aren't legally allowed to go. The transmission range is about 25 yards. I had asked him for an example over the past year of where he might have used this, where it might have come in handy, and he said the biggest thing is domestic violence calls, and, you know, it just makes it safer for them entering rooms when they don't know what they're walking into, basically. 10 officers have already been trained on the use of the Throwbot, and 10 more will be going to the training. It would be, it would be kept in the supervisor's car for use. And then I asked him if any other departments on the North Shore have one of these devices, and they do not, he does not think. And so then, of course, that begs the question, are you going to be asked to provide them with the use? And he said, of course, because that's the way they work. So just to add a little bit more information on the device itself.
Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, President Prozinski. So on Broadway, a couple of So on Broadway, a couple of years ago, there was a person who had barricaded himself in a home, was heavily armed, and NMLAC was there and the state police was there, and I got to see one of these things, does the state police have one? And it like, literally like, was like a spider and it creeped itself into the place, and it made it really safe for them to, for the, all the police together to do their work.
Any further discussion? Having a little bit of experience with, in this field, I think that this offers not only safety for the officers, but also safety for the individuals that are inside the buildings. Eyes and ears inside, this is a big safety factor, and it's something that a lot of times, seconds count, and if we have a tool like this. Just speaking on behalf of, on behalf of Biff Misha, who's always been at the forefront of public safety, he's the one who goes to the police departments, the fire departments, emergency services. He's the one who says, what can I do to help? What do you need? It's not that we're looking for a handout, it's that he comes forward and does that. So my hat's off to Mr. Misha for being so concerned, not just here, but other communities. With that, on Counselor Merkel's motion to adopt $19,440 to purchase the Throwbot Micro Bot for the Salem Police Department, all those in favor, all those opposed, medicaries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have an order to accept a $1,500 donation from the Office of Inclusive Excellence at Salem State University to support the City of Salem's Black History of Months events.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I move for adoption.
Counselor Merkel moves for adoption, under discussion.
Thank you, and thank you to Salem State University for this donation. And I want to say thank you to Alphonse Wright and the Salem Human Rights Coalition for organizing the terrific events that were held in February at Old Town Hall. SSU's donation helped to showcase artists and organizations such as History Live and Density and Sam Oye Musical Consort. And yeah, they were, I attended some of the events there, and it was terrific. So this is really appreciated, all the effort that went in, went into this and the donation. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, on Counselor Merkel's motion that $1,500 be donated from the Office of Inclusive Excellence at Salem State University to support the City of Salem's Black History Month Events, all those in favor, all those opposed, medicaries. Further communications?
We have an order to accept a $1,000 donation from Charlene Long to help support the COA Wellness Check Program called Confirm OK.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you to President Prozinski. I move for adoption.
Counselor Merkel moves for adoption, under discussion.
Thank you to Charlene Long for this donation. I know her personally, and she really appreciates the program. And I'd like to take this opportunity to let people know what this program is. People sign up for it, and then they get three pre-programmed calls every morning between 8:00 and 8:30 a.m. And if they don't pick up, an alert is sent to the police and they visit their home. They also, it all, they also keep family and friend contact information on file, you know, for those who sign up. So you can reach out to the Council on Aging if anybody is interested, or just email us, counselors, and we're happy to, to give you some more information.
Further discussion, Counselor Watson felt.
Thank you, this is an incredibly important and wonderful program, and I encourage even our younger seniors to think about it if they live alone. A program like this would have saved my mother's life potentially, and so I just encourage everybody, again, communication, share the good word, sign up for this kind of stuff. I'm 44, and I'll probably sign up for it, just because I think this kind of connectivity that keeps all of us connected to one another and connected to the people that can help us really is life-saving. So thank you, Counselor Merkel, for your words, and thank you to Charlene Long. It's a wonderful program.
Any further discussion? Seeing none on Counselor Merkel's motion to adopt a $1,000 donation from Charlene Long to help support the Council on Aging's Wellness Check Program, all those in favor, all those opposed, medicaries. Further communications?
We have two resolutions authorizing submission of a statements of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority for the Carlton School and the Horace Mann Laboratory School.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Prozinski. Resolution authorizing submission of a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, resolved having convened in an open meeting on March 13th, 2025, prior to leave the reading. Yeah, we're all, we're looking at Counselor Varela, and I move for adoption by roll call vote.
Counselor Merkel moves for adoption by roll call vote, under discussion.
Thank you. These, these resolutions authorize the submission of statements of interest from Salem Public Schools to the Massachusetts School Building Authority's Accelerated Repair Program to address the failing HVAC equipment at the Carlton and the Horace Mann Schools. And we've had these come in routinely before too to opt into this. Council approval is a required step in this process. There's more information on the backup documentation, and this authorization doesn't approve specific projects, it just authorizes our participation in the program.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Counselors Merkel move for adoption by roll call vote, authorizing the submission of statements of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the Carlton School and the Horace Mann School. Madam Clark, please call the roll.
Counselor Watson felt, yes. Counselor Varela.
Yes.
Counselor Start.
Yes.
Counselor Mercilow.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Jurslo.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Cohen and Counselor Prozinski.
Yes. Counselor Merkel's motion authorizing the submission of statements. You have 11 ayes, no nays, medicaries. Further communications?
We have an ordinance to amend an ordinance relative to vending Article II events, event vendors, transient vendors, roving novelty vendors, hawkers, peddlers, and solicitors.
Counselor Hapworth.
Hey, Mr. President, I move to refer to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs.
Counselor Hapworth moves this be referred to Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, under discussion.
Co-posted with the Committee of the Whole.
Co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, under discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this ordinance was prompted by a Salem Main Streets study based on a federal grant from, I believe, 2020 to support special events and festivals. The ordinance was shaped by feedback from Salem Main Streets, the Chamber of Commerce, Creative Collective, and really just aims to clarify and streamline vending rules for festivals and events, both year-round and during October.
Further discussion, Counselor Varela.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I'm happy to see this come in. Being a vendor of the Salem Farmers Market for over a decade, a lot of times, I believe it was baked into ordinance, and it was kind of unfair what some vendors were paying per week or per year when it comes to special events. So I'm happy to see this come in and fully support the conversation. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, on Counselor Hapworth's motion to move this to, this order relative to vendors, transient vendors, roving novelty vendors, hawkers, peddlers, solicitors, move it to the Committee of Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, all those in favor, all those opposed, medicaries. Further communications?
We have an ordinance amending zoning relative to the flood hazard overlay District, Sections 8.1.5.
Counselor Hapworth.
Hey, Mr. President, I move to refer the Planning Board to hold a joint public meeting.
Counselor Hapworth moves to have a joint public hearing with the Planning Board, under discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay. This is an amendment to our FHOD ordinance to ensure continued compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program, which requires municipalities to adopt updated flood insurance rate maps and align local regulations with federal and state flood management standards. These changes are mandated by FEMA and the Massachusetts Flood Hazard Management Office. They include referencing the revised maps effective July 8th, 2025, incorporating minor textual revisions for consistency with the state's model ordinance, and refining permit criteria such as requiring adequate drainage in new developments. By adopting these amendments, Salem maintains NFIP eligibility, ensuring residents, business owners, and businesses continue to have access to federally-backed flood insurance while strengthening local flood resilience measures.
Any further discussion? Seeing none on Counselor Hapworth's motion to refer this matter to the Planning Board to hold a joint public hearing, all those in favor, all those opposed, seeing none, medicaries. Mayor's Informational Page None, motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor Mercilow.
Yeah, I know, it should have nudged me. I didn't, I didn't see my, okay. The Government Services co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, meet to consider any applications submitted by interested residents for the Tree Commission. Applications are due to the city clerk by May 16th, 2025. The available city council appointments for the commission include a member who is a licensed landscape architect or certified arborist and an alternate member of the general public, and I move for adoption.
Counselor Mercilow moves for adoption, under discussion.
Thank you, President. We actually, the city council appoints three members to the Tree Commission, and one is being reappointed. She's, you know, I attend many of those meetings, but we do have two openings. I think that's it, right? Just those two. The, the link. Yeah, the link should be online, and we're double-checking that. Is that through the clerk or through the mayor's application? City Council webpage? Okay. And so we've, and just to add on to this, we did this a couple of years ago also, the applications come in, and they go to the Committee of the Whole, and people come in, and we speak to whoever applies, and then vote on who we want to, to be representatives on the Tree Commission.
Counselor Varela.
Thank you, President Prozinski. Through you too, Counselor Mercilow, is there a time constraint on this?
It says that the applications are due on May 16th. In May. There are June appointments.
Any further discussion? Seeing none on Counselor Mercilow's motion to adopt applications for interested members to our Tree Commission, all those in favor, all those opposed, medicaries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor Davis and Jurslo, Counselor Davis.
Thank you, President Prozinski. Ordered that the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, meet to discuss and review the attached Community Benefit Agreements ordinance, and I move for adoption.
Counselor Davis moves for adoption, under discussion.
I made a very lengthy statement last time, so I'll let Counselor Jurslo say a few words.
Counselor Jurslo.
This could be a little history how we started. I became interested in this ordinance after observing Crowley Wind Community Benefits Agreement with the City of Salem from the sidelines as a member of my neighborhood association. And through that experience, I saw how a well-structured approach to community benefits could be a valuable tool for the city and its residents. My goal with this ordinance is to encourage greater community involvement in development projects across the city, ensuring that more voices are heard. In the case of the Leaf Fort Terrace Project, I felt that neighbors' concerns were not adequately addressed. Having been involved in the Crowley Wind CBA, I witnessed firsthand how a structured and transparent process can make a real difference. This ordinance is designed to support neighborhoods and the broader community by fostering a more inclusive and equitable process, and I look forward to working with my fellow counselors on this ordinance, and I want to take a moment to commend Counselor Davis for collaborating with me on this effort. And I also want to express my appreciation to City Solicitor Beth Renad in her office for their countless hours, and Kyle can agree with me, I'm sure, of research, their responsiveness to our questions, and their dedication throughout this process. I feel that maybe we should put it into committee, ordinance, and whole committee, and we work on it as a team. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Jurslo's motion to move this matter to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted the Committee, the Committee of the Whole, all those in favor, all those opposed, medicaries. Further motions? Counselor, Counselor Davis.
Thank you, President Prozinski. Ordered that the Community on Public Health, Safety, and the Environment co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, meet to review and discuss the attached leaf blower ordinance, and I move for adoption.
Counselor Davis moves for adoption, under discussion.
Thank you, President Prozinski. Mostly want to thank my colleague, Counselor Merkel, for all of the help and guidance with this. We've been having discussions, well, actually, you've been working on this for over two years, but we've been having, you know, doing our due diligence, talking, having conversations with Neil Duffy, Ray Joe Doin, and I think you have a statement as well, but I do want to address just the conversation about, you know, residents doing this while the city is exempt. You know, we spent a lot of time looking at 10 other municipalities that have moved forward with a gas leaf blower ban, whether seasonal or year-round, and this isn't in line with theirs. There is good reason for that when it comes to the storage of many leaf blowers, the storage of the batteries can become an issue. There were concerns from the departments that I mentioned when it comes to emergency cleanups and so on. I think one or two of the communities we looked at did have, you know, a phased approach like we did, and they also included, you know, maybe five years per city and city departments. We felt that was kind of taking a guess at kind of when the technology is going to be feasible, and those kind of concerns will be reconciled. It didn't feel like kind of best practices, but the idea here is that when technology kind of allows and makes it feasible, that the city would be making the same kind of transition that everyone else would. So just wanted to add that context. Thank you.
Any further discussion, Counselor Merkel?
Yes, thank you. Residents have been asking me and emailing me about this for two years, providing me with really valid data on the environmental impact and workers' health issues associated with gas blowers. And when I, when I started digging into it, I was surprised how detrimental they are. And I was surprised at the lengthy list of cities and towns that have some gas leaf blowers restrictions in place. And like Counselor Davis said, we've spoken to, you know, many of the city departments, and I've also spoken with landscapers, city counselors in other cities and towns, and most of the bans exempt, at least to some degree, their, their, their city departments, and also being the reason that the bans most often go from, through the summer months, is to exclude spring and fall cleanups, which are large-scale cleanups because, yes, the battery technology is just not there yet. So we followed in line with those, what we felt after our research was, was best practice, and this is a first step. You know, we're in a, we need for all our environmental initiatives and concerns, it's very fluid how technology advances, and we want to take advantage of that and do every, take every step we can. So we consider this a step we can take, and also, we included compliance times that are one to two years away to ease the financial burdens of making this change. And some landscapers already have clients in, in the other cities and towns that have the bans, and the ones I spoke to did say it is easier because of the large-scale cleanups that they still have other options and, and having some compliance time. So yeah, that's where we landed on this, and we're looking forward to, we have a lot more data and information to offer when we go into committee, and thank you to Counselor Davis for his work on this as well, and the residents that kept reaching out.
Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, President Prozinski. So I wish that the ASME workers had not left the room, because several of them identified are DPS workers who have used the gas blowers, and I just, if they were here, I just want them to know I care about their health as well. So if the body does choose to put in the public health safety and So if the body does choose to put it in the Public Health, Safety, and Environment Committee, I'll schedule a meeting, but I think it's really worth not being as limited as perhaps this is proposed. Thank you.
Councilor Watsonfeld.
Thank you, President Prozynski. Just a couple of remarks here. I want to personally thank Councilor Merkel and Councilor Davis for bringing this forward. As Councilor Merkel said, I know she and I have received a number of those same emails over the last four years. It's been longer. I can remember receiving email inquiries about gas leaf blower bans and having conversations with residents as early as my first, my first door-knocking experience. It's been on a lot of residents' minds for a long time, and I think that we've been facing this barrier of, but what about us, right? What about our school cleanup? And that was always kind of the negotiation back and forth. Well, I'm so glad that we have now an option to discuss a potential first step towards, towards seeing this benefit come to the city. Now, I am a little concerned, I understand it, but I understand also the remarks made tonight a little bit about if okay for thee but not for me kind of hypocrisy, so I think we need to talk really intentionally about that. I'm looking forward to the conversation, but at least, you know, it cannot be overstated that oftentimes this is what happens, right? Something is brought to us, and we cycle, and we come back and forth between the city, and it's raised multiple times, and, you know, we all have lives and full-time jobs and everything. It's really hard to move the needle sometimes, and so I just really appreciate that there's something in front of us that we can now respond to and work on and hopefully make progress on. Thank you.
Councilor Murcillo.
Thank you, President. I also, thank you for bringing this in. I agree. I personally am not a huge fan of the leaf blowers for a variety of reasons, but I would have a hard time voting for this with the exemption of the city. Either we believe that it's an environmental hazard, or we don't. Either we believe that it's not okay for the people that are holding these gas-powered backpacks, or we don't. You know, the city property takes up a lot of space, and like, it's everywhere. It's parks, it's schools, it's municipal buildings, and too often, we exempt the city from our ordinances, and it doesn't make any sense. So I, I'm just saying that. I think that there's a way to get the city involved. I noticed in the backup materials, several of the communities listed said that their municipalities already moved over to the electric devices, so there has to be a way to include the city in this also.
Councilor Borello.
Thank you, President Prozynski. I remember this conversation coming up a couple of years ago as well, and talking to Ray Jodin about this, and that was, the biggest hurdle was the transition of equipment, and I don't feel comfortable putting this on our residents without us doing it as a city. We need to set an example. If we're going to make our residents do it, the city needs to follow suit, and I do really think it's reasonable to transition eventually to electric leaf blowers for the city. Thank you.
Councilor Merkel.
Thank you, President Prozynski. Yes, I had, I appreciate the comments made by my colleagues, and that's why it took time. I've had the same reservations, and we've had these conversations too, and it has been a barrier for at least starting the conversation. So I'm looking forward to committee meetings where we can ask our department heads, and I believe it was Swan Scott that had said they had moved off of them, but there were interesting conversations we had with, it was just very far-reaching, and like, I remember the police chief, and Councilor Davis, please correct me if the notes in my head, I get incorrectly, but it was interesting when he said one problem would be if it takes longer for DPS, when they're doing, you know, work with blowers, if he provides police details, and that would change his budget for police details if a process was taking longer. It was just interesting how far-reaching everything is. So I hope that we can, in committee, maybe look at other options, and I'll also say some did have, as Councilor Davis touched on, long, longer compliance times, and then did include their DPS. Like, one would be one year for residents, two years for a landscape business, and then five years for their DPS, and that just seems so arbitrary. What if the batteries are there in three years? And, well, you gave us, you know, so I didn't feel comfortable just right before it even goes to committee, landing on arbitrary dates. I'm hoping that's what, what the committee meetings, the purpose they can serve, is having this exact conversation and see what we can land on and make these first steps.
Councilor Cohen.
Thank you, President Prozynski. I find it kind of an odd argument that this is good for the environment. It's very much like, you know, we passed the specialized code, still to this date, there's only two other communities on the North Shore have done it. We're not gonna, we passed the Green Building Ordinance for municipal properties, but, you know, the specialized code handled the other ones, but we're not gonna fix the climate crisis one community at a time. It has to be a joint effort, and it's kind of odd to think that, I mean, I'm for getting rid of gas, everything, appliances, you know, snow blowers, you know, boilers and furnaces and everything. However, it's, you know, to Councilor Murcillo's point, if you think about the environment, like, we're gonna say that it's okay for the school playgrounds and the parks to have gas, you know, fumes, and yet residential, other residential areas that are adjacent to it not? So I think we'll have a robust, robust discussion in committee, but I find the environmental argument to be a little specious at this point based on that.
Any further discussion? On Councilor Davis's motion that the Committee of Public Health, Safety, and Environment co-posted with the Committee of the Whole meet to review and discuss leaf blower ordinance, all those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Any further motions, orders, and resolutions? Seeing none. Committee reports. Councilor Merkel.
Thank you, President Prozynski. City of Salem and City Council, March 13th, 2025, the Committee on Administration of Finance co-posted with the Committee of the Whole to whom it was referred the matter of the mayor's compensation for Chapter Two, Section 142, that during the first three months of the City Council's biennial organization, the matter of the mayor's compensation shall be reviewed, and a recommendation reported to the City Council no later than the first meeting in April has considered said matter and would recommend a 3% increase for the mayor.
On the acceptance of the report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Council Merkel.
Thank you. Under discussion. Okay, so the Committee of, sorry, sorry about that, trying to get on the right page here for my notes. Okay, the A and F Committee co-posted with the Committee of the Whole. We were joined by Lisa Camerata, our Human Resources Director, and also Anna Friedman, our Finance Director. We reviewed comparisons for mayoral compensations in other cities, which was provided by Ms. Camerata, and some history of past increases for the mayor's salary, which was raised incrementally to $150,000 per year by January of 2019. It was reviewed again in 2022 with no change. It was interesting how much the comparative salaries for the mayors varied, but $150,000 seemed to be about average. Of note, the compensation for councilors is 10% of the mayor's compensation annually, and for the school committee, it's 8% of the mayor's salary in compensation. We had a good discussion. Concerns were expressed about stressors on the budget for this year and level funding in other departments, so there shouldn't be any increase. Also expressed was the need for the salary to be competitive, and some expressed that it feels irresponsible when we get behind in increases and then need very large increases, so small incremental increases seem to be best practice. Giving the cost of living increase was also discussed, and Ms. Camerata confirmed that the city landed on this at 3% for the current COLA. Ms. Friedman confirmed that COLAs for fiscal year '25 for non-union employees was ultimately 3%, and the COLAs agreed to in the city's collective bargaining agreements for fiscal year '25 for union employments is also 3%. So a motion was made to increase the mayor's compensation by 3% for fiscal year 2026, starting January 2026, and no increase for the second year when it is not reviewed. This motion passed favorably with a 3-2 vote.
Any further discussion? Councilor Cohen.
Thank you, President Prozynski. I'll be voting no. Yeah, I can't speak for our current mayor, future mayors. I don't know how much $4,500 will mean about, you know, their staying in the position or running again or whatever. I do think that we are having a significant problem, especially with DPS and electrical engineering to retain employees, and, you know, the landscape is kind of uncertain right now, and so, you know, we haven't entered our budget meetings yet, and so don't know what's gonna happen, but I just feel a lot more comfortable not making this vote at this time. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilor Stott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just some additional context, I am in favor of this 3% increase. The mayor's salary has not received an increase since 2016, I believe, 2017, 18, 19. Time is an illusion. Sorry, since 2019, it's now 2025, and we're talking about 2026, that would be six years total. And this annual review that we do is via our ordinance, it's written in our Book of Ordinance that the council body reviews the mayor's salary every two years on a non-election year. So this isn't something that, oh, it's a tight budget season, we can come back at it next year. This is, we need to be long-term thinking here, and if we continue to punt this down the road, which is what we did during the previous review, because, again, there was something going on, it was a pandemic, we don't want to raise more money, that's a forever situation. There's always going to be something going on. As also an employee of the city, I think it's the fair thing to do to have a cost of living increase, just like we do for our other employees within the city. It's not, you know, life-changing or major, major numbers here, but it does at least show that we are taking a methodical, little more thoughtful approach to the salary review that we're supposed to be doing every two years. The mayors don't really get into this business, I think, for the money. I think we definitely had a robust conversation about the job expectations in this role and the type of people that, you know, are skilled and qualified for this role, similar to like CEOs for the companies, that department heads within the city make more than the mayor, so it's, it's not the, you know, it's, they're in it for a money grab. But I do think that if we don't make this change now, where we looked at the cities and towns surrounding us, we were kind of right in the middle, average, looking good. The next time we do this review or try to punt it down the line again, we're going to not be in that position, because that was definitely one data point that was not shown on the sheet for us, was what are the other communities planning to do in the next, in the future years? It was just a timestamp of right now, right now, we're looking good. I would like us to continue to look good and pay salary adequately.
Further discussion? Councilor Watsonfeld.
Thank you, President Prozynski. Just to add to a couple of comments that Councilor Stott made, I think mathematically, it's really important that we take a look at the fact that from a cost of living increase perspective, which is supposed to, supposedly, help employees keep up with the cost of inflation and changing, changing cost of living. I can't recall the last time the mayor did not honor a cost of living increase for every employee, both union and non-union, for the City of Salem, and did not receive one for himself the last time it came up, two and a half years ago. And if he does not receive a cost of living increase, again, in addition to, I think it being methodical, intentional, incremental, so that we don't face large jumps in the future, the timeline also is just different, right? So we're talking about a missed cost of living three and a half, or two, three years ago, another potential missed cost of living increase, which will wait for another three years to pick up another conversation around cost of living increase. So, so mathematically speaking, the mayor's salary is not being maintained at a cost of living increase standard that most professionals would expect if we don't vote for this. So in addition to everything Councilor Stott said, and acknowledging and deeply respecting the conversation that Councilor Cohen raised and the concerns that were raised in our committee discussion, because I understand that, and I, and I understand the concerns, I, I will be voting for this and do support this, simply because the timeline, the math, the professionalism, you know, not wanting to see large leaps again in the future, wanting to maintain the kind of position salary that we will continue to have qualified candidates apply for, and, and hopefully have interest in and be able to do well. So, yeah, I just, I just, it's so important to remember that we look at every single other person's salary every single year, and we're now looking at potentially six years, six years since the last increase, which would turn into nine. That's what it looks like if we say no tonight. Thank you.
Councilor Merkel.
Thank you, President Prozynski. I had also expressed support for this 3% increase in the committee meeting, really based on what has, what the statements on, by my colleagues, and that is just best financial practice to give incremental increases, especially cost of living, as was pointed out, when something would be going, you know, nine years with no movement, and then you get behind, because like I said, we don't know what the other cities and towns plan for, for possible increases, and then we have to have this huge increase in the budget because we didn't act for many years. So I also support it for those reasons as well.
Councilor Davis.
Thank you, President Prozynski. I'm also not supportive of this, but what I, well, my focus is on, kind of frankly, is more so the, the cost of living increase for the 150 employees that are on, you know, our, you know, payroll, that are making between minimum wage and $18 an hour, right? So when you talk about cost of living increase, that's really kind of where my mind goes. I think that, you know, I understand all the points about, you know, keeping up to date, and I think that, you know, again, you know, whether the mayor's making 150 or 154, that's fine, we're in a really, I think, kind of precarious budget kind of climate, so it's just, it's hard to do everything that makes sense and is good, but I think that was a really, I want to highlight that, that part of the conversation that I thought was really great, because it felt like we had a lot of consensus about, everyone deserves a cost of living increase, and we should be, you know, I think those folks should be part of the conversation as well. I wish ASME, our friends at ASME are still here, because, you know, we applauded three times for folks that I think a lot of them are probably on that list, so I just want to make sure that we're centering the folks that really do need a cost of living increase. And I know this is what is in front of us, but that's where my mind goes, because does a $150,000 salaried person need an increase? No, and that's not the point, but just, but this just, I think it's important to center folks that need that.
Any further discussion? Councilor Harvey.
Thank you, President Prozynski. I kind of agree with both Kyle and Councilor Cohen, especially with Councilor Cohen. We have so many departments in our city that aren't fully staffed because of the lack of compensation, we can't hold. So to, at this point, to increase the mayor's salary by 3% just doesn't make any sense to me. Thank you.
Councilor Murcillo.
Thank you. I think I said at the committee meeting that I'm not necessarily in favor of raising the mayor's salary this time because of the really tight budgets that we're looking at, and it's just getting worse day by day. I will say, after the meeting, I spoke with Anna Friedman about if there's any city employees that make more than the mayor, and there are several, most of them are in the school department, and then there's one city employee. are several. Most of them are in the school department. And then there's one city employee. But at the same time, we need to look at the department heads that are reaching that salary level of the mayor. And so that's where I'm conflicted, because in the next two years or so, they're probably going to reach his salary. And I think that the mayor should be compensated more highly than, you know, some of the department, than department heads in general. So I think we are definitely getting to that time when we need to think about a salary increase. I'm just not, I just can't do it this year, though. I just, and I know I said that last time, too. It's just difficult to do it in this kind of fiscal environment. And I agree that we have so many open positions in the city that need more compensation. This, this 3% increase, you know, which also would bump us, bump us up 3% and the school committee up 3%, you know, it's not a lot of money. I know that. But even that amount of money is going to make a difference with, with this fiscal environment. So I'm probably a no.
Any further discussion? Counsel Varela.
Thank you, President Prozynski. So I think it's just, I'm in favor of this, only because I think it's healthy to look into the future. We have not given the mayor a raise since 2019. We can, and I was one of those from last time around, that we did not give the mayor a raise. However, I do think at this time to look forward into the future, to attract people that would not necessarily be just our mayor now, but future mayors, be responsible. I just don't want to see a huge jump just so we have to attract the mayor down the line. And for that reason, I think when the time comes, I'd like to move for a roll call vote when this happens. Thank you.
Counsel Hapworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't want to repeat the points that were made about fiscal responsibility here, just the, the intelligence of just increasing this slowly over time and not all at once. But I think that a lot of these votes always, and the reason that the mayor's salary has not been raised since 2019 is it is viewed as symbolic. 3% isn't hurting anybody. 3% is barely noticeable in our budget, even when it's tight. But it is symbolic, and it is something that we look at frequently. And we don't want to give the mayor a raise, because then it gives the rest of us a raise, and then it looks, it, it, the optics aren't great. But I will add that we're heading into very, very difficult fiscal times, and you're going to want the person in the corner office to, to be competent and to be well compensated, because they're going to earn that money. Because there's some very, very difficult decisions coming down for us. And I think denying this again, having, you know, we're going into year six without, without any change to cost of living for the mayor, I don't think is a smart decision moving forward. I understand everyone's vote, but I don't think that's a smart decision. I think that we want to compensate someone in that office for what they're about to deal with. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Watson felt.
Thank you, President Prozynski. Just a point of clarification for the public's awareness. When we say we are voting, when we say, so what Counselor Hapworth just said is, you know, symbolic feels that we're voting for ourselves. The way that this works is that we are not voting for ourselves if we are not reelected. This does not go into effect until the year after the election year. So I see some candidates in the room that I'm excited to see here engaging in this conversation. And I just want you all to know that the reason why it is designed that way is because we are voting for whomever sits in this seat next, right? It may be us if we seek reelection. It may not be. But we do not reap the benefit of tonight's vote unless we are reelected next year. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Varela's motion to put this to a roll call vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Just to be clear, we're all voting for a a vote for, a a vote means we're voting for the 3% raise, a nay vote means we're not.
Counsel Watson felt?
Yes.
Counsel Varela?
Yes.
Counsel Stott?
Yes.
Counsel Rossello?
No.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Jurslow?
Yes.
Counsel Harvey?
No.
Counsel Hapworth?
Yes.
Counsel Davis?
No.
Counsel Cohen?
No.
And Counsel Prozynski?
No. On the matter of giving the mayor a 3% raise, we have six yays, five nays, matter carries. Further committee reports. Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Prozynski. Let me just get to the right, the chair. City of Salem and City Council, March 13th, 2025, the Committee on Administration and Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, to whom was referred the matter of school committee compensation for Chapter Two, Article Four, Division 11, School Committee, Section 956, Compensation of Members, and that the recommendation be reported to the City Council no later than the first meeting in May, has considered said matter and recommend no increase on school committee compensation, and would recommend that this ordinance be referred to the Committee of Ordnances, Licenses and Legal Affairs for review.
On the acceptance of the report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Under further discussion, Counsel Merkel.
Thank you. We went over some of the history of the school committee's compensation and the comparison of the 8%, which is 12,000 per year. And Ms. Camerata noted that Lynn's compensation is 9,600 per year, and Beverly's 8,000 per year. The school committee compensation was reviewed in April of 2023, and the status of their compensation was changed from a stipend to a salary, which is more appropriate and more beneficial in regards to benefits and such. The committee and council members did not feel an increase was needed at this time. Also discussed was the inconsistency of the school committee compensation being reviewed and not the councils. This is in place from when the school committee received a set amount, a stipend, and that would be reviewed. But now it's based on a percent of the mayor's salary, which does get reviewed. So the committee voted unanimously to recommend no action be taken on this school committee's compensation, and to also recommend that the requirement in the ordinance to review the school committee compensation every two years in the first three months of the council's biennial organization be removed. Thank you.
Any further discussion? On the matter that this?
Sorry.
I'm sorry. Counsel Watson felt.
Thank you, President Prozynski. The one thing that we definitely did discuss as well, though we did not have an answer for, and actually did come up after our conversation, because it was raised by a member of the city, a school committee, to me in just a private conversation, was what if we want to apply that money elsewhere, right? If this is approved and we receive the mayor, our version of the percent of the mayor's 3%, do we have to take that money? Can the school committee reject it? And I don't know the answer to that question. That was raised as well. Could the mayor reject it, right? We didn't know what that would mean for appropriating those funds elsewhere. But I encourage, I did want the public to know that it has come up. It's an interesting conversation, and I think we just need legal's advice on it. I would encourage anyone from either the City Council, the mayor's office, or the city school committee to contact legal and see, and finance and chase that, that question down. Because I don't know that we ever got a clear answer on that. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none. Counsel Merkel's motion that this be, that this matter of the school committee compensation be referred to the Committee on Ordnances, Licenses and Legal Affairs, all those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Further committee reports, Counsel Hapworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. City of Salem and City Council, March 13th, 2025, Committee on Ordnances, Licenses and Legal Affairs, to whom was referred the matter of denied public guide license for Michael Hannan, has said, has considered said matter and would recommend the license be granted with conditions.
On the acceptance of the report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Counsel Hapworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just thank, this was an executive session, so just want to thank Mr. Hannan for his, his time and his testimony. And the licenses were granted with the condition that they could be revoked for violations of the ordinance.
Counsel Hapworth's motion to adopt the recommendation, all those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Further committee reports, Counsel Hapworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. City of Salem and City Council, March 13th, 2025, Committee on Ordnances, Licenses and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, to whom was referred the matter of an ordinance to amend an ordinance relative to abandoned foreclosed properties, has considered said matter and recommend it remain in committee.
On the acceptance of the report, all those in favor? Opposed? Counsel Hapworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a good conversation around this ordinance. The, there's a, I guess, sort of a general principle that we need to discourage people from leaving properties vacant for a number of reasons. Number one, we're in a housing crisis right now. We need to encourage people to create more homes, and specifically to create affordable homes if possible. But I guess, you know, more practically, any abandoned property can impose a cost upon a community, both an actual cost in city responses to the property, and just a response in terms of, you know, potentially danger to the neighborhood and to the children living in the neighborhood. So there are, you know, there, there, there were, there were several questions asked by the committee. I think that, you know, James did his best to answer our questions. We've got a few questions out with him, namely just questions around people who lived in a foreclosed property. How does that impact them? And how, how could we adjust the, the ordinance to, to impact for that? So there's, there's still some questions out that we are waiting on. And then once we get those answers in, we'll bring it back before the committee.
Any further discussion? Counsel Watson felt.
Thank you. Another little soapbox moment where this is a situation in my mind where it sort of came to us from the city, like it's okay for, you know, the, but not for me. In this conversation, I did raise my concerns around the city-owned property at Five Broad Street, which has been vacant since, I don't know, 17 years, since the Council on Aging left. The building is falling apart. The building is become a hotbed for nuisance activity. It is a historic building of great significance, which is crumbling into the ground. And in addition to my own personal concerns around foreclosed properties where the owners are still living in their properties and not wanting to cause additional harm to residents, I also have a, as has come up a couple of times tonight, right? And a little bit of a, of a twinge in my conscience about doing something for residents that we're not expecting the city, a standard the city to meet. So I'm looking forward to continuing this conversation. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Hapworth's motion that the matter of abandoned and foreclosed properties remain in committee, all those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Further committee reports, Counsel Hapworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. City of Salem and City Council, March 13th, 2025, Committee on Ordnances, Licenses and Legal Affairs, to whom was referred the matter of granting of certain licenses, sea worms and secondhand valuables, has considered said matter and recommend the licenses be granted.
On the acceptance of the report, all those in favor? Opposed? Counsel Hapworth.
Just good luck with the sea worms.
On Counsel Hapworth's motion to adopt the recommendation on sea worms and secondhand valuables, all those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Further committee reports, Counsel Hapworth.
City of Salem and City Council, March 13th, 2025, Committee on Ordnances, Licenses and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, to whom was referred the matter of homeroom petition relative to composition of licensing board for the city of Salem, has considered said matter and would recommend adoption.
On the acceptance of the report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Counsel Hapworth.
I'll just note that Counsel Varela has recused himself. Had a very brief conversation around this. There, there's, as many may know, there's only three members on the licensing board, which can cause a lot of issues, specifically when there's illness going around or somebody is not available. And they have a lot of issues getting a quorum. This happens in a number of communities. And the way most communities have dealt with this has been to, to add one alternate to the licensing board. So this homeroom petition would ask us to add one alternate, and then it would give us the ability to, to have someone to stand in if needed.
Any further discussion?
This require a roll call vote, Mr. President.
Counsel Hapworth's motion.
One, sorry, sorry, Mr. President. One more thing. There was a, a change to the word. Yeah, it was alternate from associate to alternate. In front of my ear. Here it is. On, yeah, section three, on the first page, says an associate member, it should say an alternate member. So just adjusting that wording. When we, when we accept this, we're adjusting that wording.
On Counsel Hapworth's motion to adopt a recommendation to the homeroom petition relative to the composition of the licensing board for the city of Salem, Madam Clerk,
Counsel Watson felt?
Yes.
Counsel Stott?
Yes.
Counsel Rossello?
Yes.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Jurslow?
Yes.
Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Counsel Hapworth?
Yes.
Counsel Davis?
Yes.
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
And Counsel Prozynski?
Yes. On the matter of the composition of the licensing board, we have 10 in favor, no nays, and one recused. Matter carries. Further committee reports, Counsel Hapworth.
City of Salem and City Council, March 13th, 2025, Committee on Ordnances, Licenses and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, to whom was referred the matter of homeroom petition relative to increasing the local option tax in the city of Salem on the sale of marijuana and marijuana products, has considered said matter and would recommend adoption.
On the acceptance of the report, all those in favor? Opposed? Counsel Hapworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is, as we may know, these, these host community agreements that we have have been very difficult, really for all parties involved, but on all municipalities, to navigate and to understand. They've been challenged. And this would really take us from where we have a 17% tax at the state level and 3% locally, and then 3% in the host agreement. It would just take that 3% and shrink it back down into that other 3% to give us a 6% excise tax, which would bring us in line with a lot of other excise taxes locally. It would simplify things. It would, I think, for all parties involved, it would simplify this process and bring it to a much, much fairer situation for everybody, in my opinion. I don't know, maybe not all share this belief, but my opinion this probably won't be accepted by the state legislature. But I think at the very least, it's a message to, to the State House that this is not working here locally. Hopefully other communities begin to follow suit. And, and who knows, maybe it will, maybe it will be accepted and will be the first community to have this. But either way, I think it is a message that this is not working here locally.
Thank you, counsel. I can show that Counsel Varela has recused himself from this matter. On the acceptance of, on the, on the matter of the adoption, the recommendation?
Further.
I'm sorry. Counsel, Counsel Watson felt.
Thank you, President Prozynski. When homeroom petitions come up, I just like to make a public statement just around how folks who support this, because we had, we had a lot of support for this, or I wouldn't say a lot, that's hyperbole, but we had some support for this. But when it comes to homeroom petitions, as Counselor Hapworth just observed that these have to get through the state, and something like this may not, may not likely make it through the state, but does send a clear message. But what sends an even bigger message is when the public engages. So if you want to call representatives and send letters of support for these homeroom petitions, that also matters. It goes on public record, and I encourage you to do so. I've been working with State Clerk's Office and Mr. President to figure out how we can maybe make what, where our homeroom petitions are and where they are at in their process, and how you can support them if you'd like to, more transparent and accessible through our website. So hopefully we'll be able to work on that coming soon. But, you know, we lob these things over to the state side of the fence, and we engage with our representatives as your elected representatives. But the power of the people is what matters. So please do support them, right. but the power of the people is what matters. So please, um, do support them, write letters of support, show up, add pressure to the conversation, um, because these home rule petitions have a tendency to hang out for years. So thank you for those that are readily ready to support.
Any further discussion? Counsel Cohen.
Uh, thank you, President Prozinski. So we as a body don't make enough phone calls to our, uh, legislators and they're the ones who are going to carry the flag for us. I do want to mention something that came up in the meeting. This does not increase the burden on the shops more than is now. It's basically, um, replacing the, um, HCA with an excise tax. What's really egregious is that the legislature decided that the state should get 17%, which is really more of a burden on the shops than the excise tax that would be somewhat equal to like a sales tax. So I encourage people, if they are talking to their representatives or when it, if it ever gets to conference, to let them know that that's unfair. Um, it doesn't exist in other comparable, um, you know, industries like the liquor industry, and it's just unfair. The burden of any burden of this shop, whether it's through the process of community meetings or anything else, falls to the community.
Any further discussion? Seeing none on Counsel Hapworth's recommendation that the matter of the home rule petition relative to increasing the local option tax on the sale of marijuana and marijuana products, this being a home rule petition needs a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Watson felt.
Yes.
Counsel Stott.
Yes.
Counsel Masillo.
Yes.
Counsel Merkel.
Yes.
Counsel Jerslow.
Yes.
Counsel Harvey.
Yes.
Counsel Hapworth.
Yes.
Counsel Davis.
Yes.
Counsel Cohen.
Yes.
On the matter of the home rule petition to increase the open tax rate on marijuana, marijuana products, we have 10 in the affirmative, zero nays, and one member recused, matter carries. Counsel Masillo. Counsel Verella has rejoined us.
Further committee reports, Counsel Prozinski.
The committee of the whole, to whom was referred the matter of meeting with Andrew DeFranza and Jason Etheridge to discuss the project on Majin Street and Life Bridge, has considered the matter and would recommend that this remain in committee.
On acceptance of the report, all those in favor? On, on adoption of, uh, on adoption of the recommendation, Counsel Prozinski.
Thank you. Um, three days ago on Monday night, we had a meeting of the committee of the whole where the Life Bridge Committee, including the, uh, the president director and the developer, um, gave a presentation to the city council. All members were present. Um, a very in-depth thorough presentation on the latest changes and mission into, uh, what their proposal was for the downtown area. The, uh, council was able to ask some very poignant questions on the, on it. And then, uh, we received quite a bit of public comment, uh, both, um, in favor and not in favor. Um, it was a constructive meeting, very robust, very civil, and, uh, we're looking forward to continuing discussion and, and at a further date. So that's why we are recommending that it be remain in committee.
Any further discussion? Seeing none on adoption of the recommendation that this remain in committee, all those in favor, all those opposed, the matter carries.
We have petition from National Grid to relocate one jointly owned pole from 4244 Highland Ave to corner driveway at 40R Highland Ave.
Hearing ordered on March, like March 27th, 2025. Further petitions?
We have the following license applications, limousine, taxi cab, public guides and taxi operators.
Counsel Hapworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move these be granted.
Counsel Hapworth moves that these be granted. All those in favor, all those opposed, matter carries. Further petition, Counsel Hapworth.
We have seven claims.
Too fast.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to refer to the committee on ordinances, licenses and legal affairs.
Counsel Hapworth moves to, move the, uh, claims over to the committee on ordinances, license and legal affairs. All those in favor, all those opposed, matter carries. Further petitions?
We have eight jointly contract operator license applications.
Counsel Hapworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move these be granted.
Counsel Hapworth moves that these be granted. All in favor, all opposed, granted. Unfinished business.
We have an ordinance, um, we have for second passage, an ordinance amending zoning relative to business neighborhood zoning B1, section 3.1, table of principle and accessory use regulations.
Let the record show that Counsel Verella has recused himself. Counsel Cohen.
Uh, thank you, President Prozinski. I moved, uh, move adoption for second passage by roll call vote.
Counsel Cohen moves for second passage by roll call vote. Under discussion? Counsel Jerslow.
Thank you, President Prozinski. Um, I just have some concerns with, um, the definitions of indoor commercial recreation. And I believe back in August meeting when we were discussing this, um, Mayor Pangailo stated the intention to this, this ordinance change is to create smaller scale opportunities. But in the city charter, the commercial indoor commercial recreation is defined as, and I'm not sure if everybody's aware of this, a structure for recreational, social amusement purposes, which may include as an accessory use for the consumption of food and drink, including all connected rooms or space with a common means of egress and entrance. Places of assembly shall include theaters, concert halls, dance halls, skating rinks, bowling alleys, health clubs, dance studios, amusement arcade or other. Commercial recreation centers conducted for or not for profit. So I ask, what is the other? Does this include or could it include a shooting range, a strip club? It does not state that, and I think we need to clarify that. Um, this should go back into committee to clarify this language and the definition of that word. And if you don't think that could happen in a neighborhood, then just ask the residents on East Holland Street and Planters Street if they ever thought that there would be a drug rehabilitation facility next door to them in a residential neighborhood. So it can happen. So I would make a motion to put this back into committee so we can define these, um, definitions better to, um, word it better or to a smaller, um, square footage like they did for the, um, small grocery store. They said it does not exceed 15,000 square foot feet, but in the commercial indoor recreation, commercial recreation, there's no square footage. So it could be 40,000 feet, could be 50,000 feet. And there are buildings in this B1 zone in a residential neighborhood that this could happen. So I make a motion that we put it back into committee to define these definitions better.
Counsel Jerslow moves that this matter be, uh, moved back into committee. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel, Counsel Harvey. Under discussion, Counsel Cohen.
Uh, thank you, President Prozinski. Um, unlike the other three, uh, that we approved that went from a no to a why. So, you know, this includes BA, which is, uh, you know, by appeal. So not only do any of these uses have to go through the relevant permitting process, for example, if someone had a, wanted a gun range, they have to go through whatever, you know, the, the state gun rules are. Um, but it, they have to go through the zoning board for a special permit and conditions can be made in that, um, in that body. And then if it goes to licensing or whatever other board it goes through, or particularly if it requires a state approval, like from the ATF or anything else, maybe, you know, alcohol, beverage, whatever, um, then it still has to come through. So this, we have created, when we voted first passage, we have created an extra level of consideration. And in every case, the public, you know, in, in both the zoning board and licensing board and any other board, it has to go through, there'll be opportunity for the public to weigh in. And, um, you know, my personal belief is that B1 zones shouldn't exist at all. The whole concept of this, um, order is to create, um, more robust neighborhoods where, you know, for people don't remember, it eliminated daycare centers and small grocers and some of the coolest places that we have in our neighborhoods, like Doobies and Tin Whistle and Mercy Tavern and Dottie and Ray's are places where you tend to see less tourists and more people from the neighborhood. And that is the premise of this. And so I am going to vote against this, um, going back to committee. I think that we should take a vote now today and move this forward. Thank you.
Counsel Watson felt.
Thank you, uh, President Prozinski. I don't actually have much to add to the extensive comments I've made at the multiple public meetings we've had previously on this matter. Um, and I, I support Counselor Cohen's, um, reiteration of many of these facts that we have a number of governing bodies in place to ensure time, place, manner and use, um, are, are, uh, reviewed and, and approved or denied based on, um, those bodies, uh, uh, unique governing responsibilities. I do want to add a couple of comments about, um, the reference to the former Ward Two Social Club at the end of Planters and East Collins, which is in Ward Two, as you all know. Um, the, uh, use as a rehabilitation facility is not what I would consider something under the other, um, as outlined in the charter as Counsel Jerslow, uh, read. That was a nonprofit approved purpose that was leveraged, leveraged the Dover Amendment, which was an extensive, extensive, uh, state level, um, uh, review and approval process that, uh, that, that Dover Amendment exists for the purposes of nonprofit and education, um, for certain uses. It's totally separate from zoning. It's totally separate from the B1 conversation. It's totally separate from this definition of internal recreational spaces. Um, and I, it's just not, uh, it is not a congruous example. So just for the public's reference, I'm pulling that one out. Thanks.
Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Prozinski. Uh, I want to echo what my other counselors, um, the opinions they've expressed. Uh, there is a processes in place, so I will not be voting in favor of sending it back to committee. And the purpose of this was to give, uh, the same business opportunities, you know, an equitable process that, that any business can go through that process. And, uh, yes, I won't be supporting it to be going back to committee. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Jerslow.
Thank you, President, President Prozinski. I was just trying to say that if we could put some limitations on the size of a neighborhood restaurant, a neighborhood indoor recreation, that was what I was trying to get at as a, um, the small grocery stores, 15,000 feet. You have them put on, I talked to Counselor Owen earlier about, I did some research about square footage in certain neighborhood, um, restaurants such as Witch's Brew, Mercy Tavern, Tin Whistle, um, Leslie's Retreat or Salem's Retreat now, and all of them were less than 2,000 feet. So I suggested that we put a limitation for a restaurant as 2,000 feet, but I was told it would have to go back into committee to change that. Um, just like the mayor said, you're trying to, the intention is to create smaller scale opportunities, but there are no guidelines. And trying to go through the different boards and committees, it's painful to even watch these meetings or be in these meetings. Everybody here knows that. Um, it's just the intention of a smaller scale, that's all I'm trying to get, that we should set conditions and limitations to how big you want this in your neighborhood. Nobody here, I don't think anybody here lives actually next to a B1 zone that it would actually affect you. It doesn't affect me in any way personally. I'm just talking about, um, trying to stick up for my constituents and residents from across the city who's actually reached out to me on this. These zoning were put in place to protect the residents, to protect the, um, neighborhoods, and you're taking that protection away from them. Thank you.
Counsel Cohen.
Uh, thank you, President Prozinski. A couple of things. Um, the, I'm just using two examples. The zoning board, the licensing board, and a lot of our boards, the planning board, uh, they all are able to issue conditions. Okay? That's important. That's their jurisdiction. We have given them that responsibility. Their volunteer residents in general who are, I believe, uh, doing a good thing by standing up and serving on the board. That's really important. But more important is that in the last year and a half, we have probably confirmed, I don't know, about 50, uh, people to our boards and commissions. And I don't know about other people in the, you know, I'm not going to speak for other people, but I've spoken to most of them. And every single one of them was confirmed unanimously. Every single one was confirmed unanimously. So if people have a problem with people who are serving on the boards or the decisions they're making, you have every right to stand up and object to them when they're before us. The other thing that's kind of ironic to me is that earlier in the agenda, um, Councillors Jerslow and Davis, um, submitted an ordinance that is based primarily to increase public participation on the creation of a board. And if you want to give that board some kind of jurisdiction and ability to make decisions on behalf of the community and especially the neighborhood, then we should also extend that to the other boards and committees that we vote for the people to be on, uh, the, the boards. So I, I really feel like this is an, is, is a, an outreach by, uh, that is not necessary. I trust our boards and commissions. I don't always agree with the decisions they make, but a lot of people don't always just, you know, agree with the decisions we make or I make or whatever. That's the way politics is. Thank you.
Counsel Masillo.
Thank you, President. I actually do live a block from one of these B1 zones. And so just to set that straight, I think there's several counselors that live very close to the B1 zones. And I do represent the neighborhood and I wouldn't, even if it wasn't a block from me, I, I still understand the concerns that, that you're raising, but we do have a board. We have the ZBA. And the idea that the ZBA does not deny projects is false. They have denied projects. They have denied a gun shop in a residential area. They've denied several other projects, or they haven't denied them, the projects were withdrawn, right? So it didn't even get to a vote because they could see where it was going. So the idea that the, the public won't have a voice on some of these things coming into their neighborhood, like a restaurant with a liquor license or, or the, the, what is that called again? The indoor recreation. It's just not true. The, if the public is against it or if they're for it, they're going to attend these meetings and they're going to make their voice heard and the ZBA will do their job. That's what they're there for.
Counsel Hapworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I will say, uh, Counselor Cohen, Counselor Masillo, you guys are spot on. This is, we, we have oversight as a, as a council and that oversight is the appointment of the members of these boards. Um, and I'll just add further that, like, I will always support, or generally always support, a counselor's, um, good faith request to send something to committee to talk about it. But this thing has been in and out of committee since 2024, early 2024. Um, it is time to vote on this thing. We're not, this isn't, I, I will not be voting to send this back to committee.
Any further discussion? On Counsel Jerslow's motion to send this into committee, all those in favor, all those opposed, the matter does not carry. On Counselor. On Counselor Cohen's motion for adoption for second passage by roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council Watson felt? Council Stott?
Yes.
Council Mercilow?
Yes.
Council Merkel?
Yes.
Council Jerslow?
No.
Council Harvey?
No.
Council Hapworth?
Yes.
Council Davis?
Yes.
Council Cohen?
Yes.
And Council Prozinski?
Yes. On the matter to have been the zoning relative to the business neighborhoods, zoning B1, we have eight in favor, two nays, and one recused. Further unfinished business.
Mr. President, request immediate reconsideration, in hopes that it will not prevail.
Council Hapworth, motions for immediate reconsideration, all those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Further unfinished business.
We have a bond order for the appropriation of $70,000 for the purpose of paying cost of conducting a feasibility study and schematic design at the Bates Elementary School, 53 Liberty Hill Avenue, for a potential roof replacement project.
Council Merkel.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I move for adoption for second passage by roll call vote.
Council Merkel moves for adoption by second passage, under discussion?
Thank you. This is for the second passage of a bond authorization for borrowing up to 70,000 for a feasibility study for the roof replacement project at the Bates School. As I mentioned, and we discussed in the last council meeting, the Massachusetts School Building Authority approved the Salem Public Schools to enter into their accelerated repair program for this project. The Bates roof is 25 years old and is in poor condition with active leaks, and this is a great opportunity for some of this, and some of this $70,000 will be reimbursed. And again, there is a tight deadline required by the MSBA that the council authorize this by the end of March, and this second passage tonight will get it over the finish line.
Any further discussion? Seeing none on Counselor Merkel's motion for the adoption of the appropriation of $70,000 to pay the cost of conducting a feasibility study and a schematic design at the Bates Elementary School. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council Watson felt?
Yes.
Council Varela?
Yes.
Council Stott?
Yes.
Council Mercilow?
Yes.
Council Merkel?
Yes.
Council Jerslow?
Yes.
Council Harvey?
Yes.
Council Hapworth?
Yes.
Council Davis?
Yes.
Council Cohen?
Yes.
Council Prozinski?
Yes. On the matter of the $70,000 being appropriated for Bates, we have 11 yays and zero nays. The matter carries. Further unfinished business.
We have a second passage of an ordinance to amend ordinance relative to traffic, Chapter 42, Section 50B, for handicap parking space in front of number 26 Hancock Street.
Council Cohen.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I move adoption by second pass.
Council Cohen moves for adoption by second passage. Any discussion? See, no discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Council Hapworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry, just point of clarity on, on the, on the immediate reconsideration. I believe you said it, it, it carried. You meant to say it did not prevail, correct? Just as a clarification for all.
Your, your motion carried to not?
Did not, did not prevail.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Council Mercilow.
Thank you, President. I have two, two quick things before, before we go. One is to remind people that, or to let people know, that the state is currently in a critical drought status. And this is early for a critical drought status, but here we are. Yesterday, there was an outside fire in Middleton. So again, early start to the fire season. So I just want to remind people that we do have an ordinance that bans the use of fire pits and outdoor burning. And so I've been, you know, seeing and hearing people talking about, you know, the weather's getting nicer, and they want to get out and use their fire pits. Please don't. It's against the law, and you're just adding a hazard to a drought condition. And after going through what we went through last fall, we really don't need any more of that. The second thing is that when we were talking about tour guides, I'd asked for some data on it, because I'm just curious how we're doing with the new ordinance, which increased the tour guide fees to $150, $250, and $350, and is that having an impact? So far, as of today, we have 97 tour guide licenses. Seven of those are for groups of 1 to 10, eight are for groups of 11 to 29, and 82 are for groups of 30 to 40. If they use a wireless communication, they get a $50, $50 discount. And so far, we have five tour, tour guides who are using wireless communication. So, and then just to kind of bring this back, if we compare it to last year, last year, around this time, we had 139 licenses. So so far, we have 97. It was delayed a little bit while we were trying to get our systems together for the new, the new badges. So I think it's, I think it's fine. I don't think we have to worry about the number of tour guides right now. So I just wanted people to know that, because I love data, and I know you guys are just waiting for this report. So if there's nothing else, motion to adjourn.
Council Mercilow motions to adjourn, all those in favor? We are adjourned.